Okay, we're, meeting is being recorded. Well, the, my name is Randy Hack, I'm the, or Randolph Hack, I'm the Chair Pro Tem this evening. And Palolo Neighborhood Board, come to order, please. We do have, we do have quorum now, I understand. So, with three members in person and four by Webex. Um, we're gonna go immediately, I will entertain a motion on, we're gonna juggle the agenda a bit. Entertain a motion from the floor on election of officers. Earl?
I'm making a motion that we move our board business up to number one and the city monthly report on number, on number two.
Okay.
So, we can get all of our offices elected.
Okay.
Okay, I know, okay.
Is there a second to the motion? Second somewhere, I can't.
Second Dean.
Okay Dean, okay. Alright, Earl. For the, for the office of, go through the offices you, you are selected, if they're unopposed, I will.
Okay, I'm, okay. For Chair, I nominate.
Oh, sorry, sorry guys. Real quick, if I could just jump in, so there is a first and a second on the tape, being discussed in order to move the agenda item up, but we do need to vote on it.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, aye, everybody, aye.
Aye.
Okay, is that all seven of you? I can't see.
All seven.
Okay, thank you. Alright, go ahead. The motion has been approved.
Okay, um, Randy, you want, you want me to do it or you? Okay?
The officers, if they're unopposed.
Yeah, for Chair, nominating, Colin Paris.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second?
Uh, we don't need a second for nominations.
Are there other nominations?
Are there any other nominations on the, from the floor? Okay.
I moved every close nomination.
Okay, all those in, the nominations have been closed. All those in favor of, Colin Paris, signify by, we need quorum for this.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Come on.
Randy?
Yes?
Randy, start about that. So actually, if the nominations are closed and you guys are ready to vote, I actually have to do a roll call and you guys will say the name of who, who you want.
Okay.
Even though there's only one.
Got it, okay. So I, uh, let's, let's vote, okay? Randolph Hack for Colin Paris.
I'll, I'll do a, I'll do a roll call, Randy.
That's good.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to nominate Colin, member Peros, as Chair of the Palolo Neighborhood Board. Hack?
Uh, aye.
Uh, you can say the member that you would like to nominate.
Colin.
Thank you. Iggy?
Aye for Colin.
Paul Moda? Mao? Nicole again?
Aye, Colin.
Nakayama?
Colin.
Onishi? Orleans? Peros?
Not here, he gonna say yes.
Uh, you can abstain, but then we won't have quorum. Colin. And if you guys, and if you guys could speak up, so that way the online can pick up as well. Thank you. And Shiraki?
Aye.
Okay.
The motion passes with a seven, zero, zero vote.
Okay. So we're going on now, uh, are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Bev Mao.
Do you accept Bev?
So, uh, remember Mao is not online.
Okay, she's not here today, sorry.
Yeah, she's okay, she's on the east coast.
Okay. And I believe she's already agreed to this, so. Are there any further candidates for Vice Chair?
I moved that nomination be closed.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Um, so we'll do the roll call again?
Hack?
Uh, uh, Bev Mao?
Oh, sorry Randy, we can't do any voting by proxy, so we can't, can't actually nominate Bev Mao at this meeting. If we want to disclose the nominations, then we can postpone it to next meeting.
Okay. Alright. So we'll go on, not completing that office, we're gonna go on to Secretary. Are there any nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Darlene Nakayama.
Okay. Any further nominations for Secretary?
I moved the nomination be closed.
Okay. Do the roll, second?
Second?
Aye.
Okay, do the roll call?
Okay, so the motion on the table, member Nakayama was nominated for the position of Secretary by a member Shiraki. Hack?
Nakayama.
Iggy?
Nakayama.
Paul Moda?
Nakayama.
Mao? Nicole again?
Nakayama.
Nakayama? Nakayama, Darlene?
I guess I have to vote for myself, huh? Boring.
Exactly, let's get this over.
Thank you. Onishi? Orleans? Peros?
Nakayama.
Shiraki?
Nakayama.
Motion passes with vote of seven ayes, zero noes, and zero abstentions.
Thank you, board members, for your support, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And so, go on to Treasurer?
I, Treasurer, I nominate Rusty Onishi.
Second?
Uh, I don't believe member Onishi is online.
So we can't fill that?
Put his name on top, that's all.
Um, however, there is one other, so we can't, we cannot fill that tonight, we cannot fill, Vice Chair and Treasurer tonight. We're going on, there's another office, which Sergeant at Arms, are there any nominations for Sergeant at Arms? I nominate, I nominate Earl Shiraki for Sergeant at Arms.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, I moved that nomination be closed.
Okay, the nominations, second that nominations be closed. All those in favor of Earl Shiraki as Sergeant at Arms?
Aye.
I'll, I'll do another roll call vote, Randy. So the motion on the table is to, was made by member Hack to nominate member Shiraki as Sergeant at Arms for the Palolo Neighborhood Board. Hack?
Uh, Shiraki.
Iggy?
Shiraki.
Paul Moda?
Shiraki.
Mao? Nicole again?
Shiraki.
Nakayama?
Shiraki.
Onishi? Orleans? Peros?
Shiraki.
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 Motion passes with a vote of seven, votes for Shiraki.
Okay, uh, and we're, we now have completed the nominations that we could tonight. I will now turn the meeting over to the elected Chair, Colin Peros. Did I say it right, Colin? I'm sorry.
Yes, you did, no worries, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, board members, really honored to serve as the Chair, so I'll do my best, but appreciate any and all support. Uh, so Board Business, Agenda Item B, Filling of Vacancies, is there anyone here wishing to fill a vacancy?
I don't see nobody.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the, I also recommend going back to the first responder reports, the Agenda Item, we skipped. But yeah, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion, Colin? If, if the first responders can wait, there's a, there's a bit of board organization that we might have to do to get that out of the way, but it's up to you entirely.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I was advised by Logan to move back to Agenda Item to the City Monthly Reports.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, if we have a representative from the Honolulu Fire Department?
Wait now, can I say something? We're gonna finish up our board business first.
Earl, already been discussed, just wait for Chair to give you, give the, give the okay, alright?
Randy, I thought you was gonna finish up.
No, 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 uh, um, we, we have to, we, we, we have city first responders waiting here, okay? We'll go back to our board business after, afterwards. Thank you, Colin, go ahead, sorry.
No worries, thanks. Yeah, so if anyone from the Honolulu Fire Department is here, you can provide your update now.
Okay, good evening, Captain Lau from the Palo Fire Station and firefighter three Les Shiroma will be giving the report tonight.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
That's Shiroma. So, I'm gonna read the statistics for the previous month, so that, this is for June, for the month of June, 2023. So for, as far as fires, we had, we responded to one structure fire, zero wildland brush fires, zero nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, and one activated fire alarm with no fire found. As far as emergencies, we responded to forty-five medical, oh forty-six, sorry, excuse me, forty-six medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, zero motor vehicle crash and collisions, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazardous material incidents. And nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle. This month's fire safety tip is grilling safety. So keep these tips in mind as you enjoy summer events and activities with family and friends. So as far as barbecuing, always barbecue grills outside away from doors, windows, vents, and other building openings. Place the grill well away from siding and deck railings and out from under eaves and overhanging branches according to the manufacturer's instructions. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas and keep starter fluid and matches out of children's reach. Cook with caution, be alert, and stay at the grill while cooking. Never leave a hot barbecue unattended. Light a propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame on the propane grill goes out, turn the gas grill off and wait at least five minutes before attempting to start again. Periodically remove grease or fat buildup in the trees below the grill so it cannot be ignited by a hot grill. Let the coals completely cool before disposing in a metal container. Never empty coals directly into a trash can. Do not store or use a grill on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on an upper level of a building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of the buildings and garages. Remember to properly inspect and maintain the tank fittings and tubing according to the manufacturer's instructions. Vapors leaked indoors can be easily ignited by pilot lights or electrical equipment, causing an explosion. And two more tips from our firefighter station, never cook a steak past medium, medium rare is preferable, and, um, let the meat rest at least ten minutes before cutting to redistribute juices. Any questions?
Thank you, that, that's very interesting. I'm grilling, I didn't know these things.
Oh, we. But, uh, yeah, um, I just got recently promoted here, so I just wanna say it's an honor to, um, serve the community in this area, and thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay.
Any questions from the members of the community? Okay. Hey, moving on, we'll now receive the, the report from the Honolulu Police Department.
Aloha, Lieutenant Taro Nakamura with HPD. Um, these are stats for June as compared to the previous month. Uh, let's see, motor vehicle thefts were two as compared to nine, burglaries were five as compared to one. Theft was ten as compared to seventeen, and UEMVs, which is theft from autos, that was one as compared to two. This is out of total calls of service of six thousand five hundred and thirty-seven for the district, and further statistical information can be found at honolupd.org. And, um, this month's safety tip is more of a, uh, I found this on the FEMA website, it's a more of a general, bunch of suggestions as far as creating a, family emergency communication plan. So in the event of a major event, do you have a plan in place for your, for your loved ones, your friends, you know, what, regardless of what the event is? I sent it to your, I sent it, I may send it to Chair Frost, so I can, I can send it again if, um, uh, if you, if you wish, but it's also on the FEMA website. It's a really good review of things that you might need, you know, and things you might not think about, like, um, knowing where your important papers are. Having emergency contact numbers in one, you know, on one sheet of paper or one, on one file, if you remember, um, once the cellphone towers go down, everything that's in your phone is not gonna work, that, or the phones won't be able to communicate at least. So that's the hardest part, because we all just program our cellphones and then we forget about whose number is what. And in an emergency, that may become a problem if you don't write down your loved ones' cellphone numbers. So that's our safety tip for the month.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions from the board members? Any questions from community members? Okay, moving on, we'll take the monthly report from the Board of Water Supply.
See you next month, Palolo.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I apologize, I'm on the road, but, uh, real quick, in the month of June, we did have two breaks, unfortunately, so June twenty-first, we had a break on an eight-inch main on Gardenia Street. And on June thirtieth, there was a break on Wyomall Road, so that was an eight-inch line. Uh, that line is scheduled to be replaced, we currently have a project pending a start date, so that's the eight-inch waterline replacement along Wyomall Road. Uh, just a quick general announcement, the board is finally bringing back its Zeriscap Plant Sale at the Halawa Zeriscap Garden. Uh, this will be August fifth, from nine AM to three PM. So if you go to our website, boardofwatersupply.com, uh, you can sign up for rain barrel workshops and get more information on the Zeriscap Plant Sale, and I'd be happy to take any question on behalf of the Board of Water Supply at this time.
Um, Chair?
Thank you, I'll, I'll take the question just from member one two.
Um, I wanted to get an update on what's going on with Red Hill.
Uh, yeah, there hasn't, geez, there's so many things. Um, if you go to our website, if you go to the Port of Water Supply website, and just type Red Hill in the search, uh, you'll find a list of all the resources there, so meeting minutes, testimony, anything the Board of Water Supply has taken part of, taken part in related to Red Hill is posted there. I can put together for next month a more comprehensive sort of summary of where we're at, if the board would prefer that.
I'd like to have a comprehensive overview of the situation.
Sure. Yeah, I will, I will have something prepared for the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, board member Hack.
Uh, will the, um, do you think by next month, the, the initial testing by the Board of Water Supply of the Red Hill Shaft will be available? Will, you'll be able to have that information, uh, per the news reports?
I will see if I can have that, if I, if it's available, I will bring it to the meeting.
Thank you.
Dominic?
Yes.
Shiraki?
Dominic, can you see me?
I'm sorry?
Can you see me, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Dominic. The main thing about me, the whole people in Honolulu is very thankful that your department is taking care of Red Hill for the sake of our water. That's the most important thing in the island. And so, you gotta know that the whole island is behind you guys, okay?
I appreciate that, you know, we are, we have a lot of work, we have a lot of work going on trying to remediate, you know, some of the issues that have come out of this, so.
Let's keep up the good work, but that's a very important matter, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dominic. Any questions from members of the community? Okay, so moving on, we'll be going to Board Business, starting with the filling of vacancies. So is there anyone in person or online who is interested in filling a vacancy?
I gotta ask her, is, I, is my chair, my chair, my seat's not vacant, correct? I'm still there?
Um, Derek, who in the sub-district you're in? We have one at-large vacancy.
Uh, um, well, am I still on the board?
No.
I'd like to fill the at-large vacancy.
Oh yeah, let's nominate Derek Turbin for at-large vacancy.
Thank you.
I second the nomination.
Is it in two and three or open?
There, uh, so just to clarify, there's one at-large vacancy, there's a sub-district two, and a sub-district three vacancy.
One at-large. Um, Juanita asked me, we're trying to get voices that not heard from the housing area, because there's no representation here. And, but the housing area is only at-large, because all the number one sub-districts are filled, but if, um, he's in three or four, then that's, that's just as far as.
Derek, do you know what sub-district you're in?
Um, let's see, so I believe it's four, um, you know, I guess.
Do you have your street name that you live on? I can actually check.
Oh, thank you, um, yeah, Keanu Street, three, four, five, six, Keanu Street.
Yeah, Keanu.
Yeah.
Sure. That's four.
Yeah, I think it's four, yeah, that's what I thought.
Uh, yeah, that is sub-district four, so the only vacancy could go would be the at-large seats.
Okay.
Okay, so was, was there a motion?
The motion on the floor, it's been seconded, uh, what's the next step, Logan?
Yeah, so, well, we don't, we don't need a seconds for nominations, actually. I believe, uh, member Nakayama already nominated member Turbin, and then, uh, there was just that point of clarification, so unless there's any other nominations, I can go ahead and conduct the roll call.
Okay.
Okay, please. Okay. So the motion made by member Nakayama. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the elections, we do need a second for, uh.
You do need a second, okay. I, I seconded Derek's nomination.
Thank you. Hack?
Uh, uh, yes, for Derek.
Iggy?
Aye for Turbin.
Paul Moda?
Aye for Turbin.
Mao? Nicole again?
Aye, Turbin.
Nakayama?
Aye for Turbin.
Onishi? Orleans? Peros?
Aye, Turbin.
Shiraki?
Turbin.
Motion passes with vote of seven, votes for member Turbin.
Okay, I tell you, we're taking so long.
Thank you, guys, good to, good to be back on the board with you.
Hey.
It's an at-large district.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
At-large.
Since I can actually swear.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it's the at-large seats, since I'm in district four.
Okay, so upon the recommendation of the neighborhood assistant, Logan, we're gonna take a short recess to swear in newly appointed member Turbin.
Okay, so, yeah, so we are in recess right now. Derek, I'm gonna go ahead and just recite the oath of office for you. And yeah, use your right hand, and after I'm done, if you could just say that you agree or not, that would be sufficient, okay?
Okay, thank you, Logan.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii, the Charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu, and the provisions of the neighborhood plan, and will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board to which I have been appointed. Do you agree?
I agree.
Alright, great, welcome back.
Thank you, Logan, I appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so having sworn in, member Turbin, we will resume the meeting. Is there anyone else willing to, wishing to fill a vacancy?
On district two and three.
Correct. Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to the determination of the meeting date, time, location, and format.
Okay, well, namaste.
See, press.
Okay, um, the meeting date, I make a motion that our meeting date is gonna be in Palo Elementary School, time seven o'clock, location on Tenth Avenue, Palo Elementary School. Everything, everything second care.
Second Wednesday at seven.
At seven o'clock.
Earl, did you, did you specify second Wednesday of, of the month?
Second Wednesday of the month, yeah. The same routine that we'll be doing.
Thank you.
Uh, so Chair just asked a question, uh, for clarification, just to, uh, provide context, there is a motion, as long as there's a second, we can dive into a discussion from the community, and then if there's no further board discussion, then you guys can vote.
Second, okay.
Okay, so to clarify, uh, member Shiraki, the, the motion that was made was the second Wednesdays at seven PM at Palo Elementary.
Everything, everything had been taken care of earlier.
Okay, any discussion from, um, board members? Sorry, should start with the public.
I, I'd like to push for that, to go back to in-person board meetings at Palo Elementary in the community, that's, that's something I'm supportive as well.
Thank you, okay. Discussion from the members of the community.
Yeah, we, we strongly support it, we've been asking this for quite a while.
Thank you. So without explicitly saying it, hybrid, there will be no option.
Yeah, unless you guys explicitly say in the motion, then it'll only be in person, okay?
So, board members, the question I just asked Logan was, without stating it's hybrid, there will be no virtual option. So with, without a motion to amend the previous motion? To amend the previous motion, can we take the vote?
As long as there's no further discussion.
Okay, any further discussion?
I.
No discussion.
Discussion. Um, so no virtual, you mean nobody virtual? Or?
Correct, as, as the motion was made, there would be no virtual option.
Because I think there may be some public members that just can't make it. Or whatever these. I think that the council members and representatives that come. To give testimony should be there in person, but I think there should be an option for a public who cannot make it in person to do it virtually.
So would you have to do somehow?
Now, what are we talking about now? We just gotta. Vote, we're gonna get our meeting, already everything has been taken care at Palolo Elementary School. But we're talking about the representatives?
So if I could, uh, just clarify, the motion is on the table, if there's no further discussion, or no one wants to make a. A motion to amend, then we can vote, and then you guys can either decide on it with the vote, or you can make another motion afterwards to. Have it on.
Well, I'd like to. Apply.
Yeah, if you'd like to amend it. So everything the same, except include a WebEx component?
Yes. So we have it at Palolo. And have the opportunity for.
Okay, so member Kawamoto just made a motion to amend. So everything that member Shirocky stated with the hybrid option.
Okay. Second.
Thank you. Back to discussion, so, um.
So clarification, um. Board members are required to be in-person at Palolo Elementary. Is that where we're, we're saying?
Can you speak up? I, I can hardly see you. I can't hear at all.
I'm trying to clarify the motion, uh, we started off with all of being in Palolo Elementary. Now it's been amended to add, add a hybrid version. I'm just asking the question, does that mean the board members required to be in-person at Palolo Elementary? That's a question.
Uh, I can clarify it, if you don't mind, Chair. Um, so the initial motion made by member Shirocky was to. Hold the meetings at Palolo Elementary at seven o'clock PM on the second Wednesdays of the month. Just as is, just in-person. Then, a motion was made. By member Kawamoto and seconded. To amend that motion to include a WebEx component, so that's the only. Requirements at this point, so if you wanted to make it a requirement for board members to. Be in-person or whether, then that would require another amendment, but if you don't want that requirement, then. And then just as is.
Okay, let's open that discussion to the members of the community first. So you mentioned wanting to have the elected officials.
Yeah, I think the board members and the city officials. That are giving reports should be in person.
If that was not heard online, the community members suggested that. Elected officials, board members included, attend in-person. So if.
That's a, that's another amendment to the, um.
Amendment, why are we making amendment for, just making sure we're going back to the regular place where we get committed? So. What's the date we're gonna go, second Wednesday of every month? Time, seven o'clock, Palolo Elementary School. In the former online, we don't need that or any of that, we don't need the WebEx, where we gonna be in person.
Yeah, member Shirocky, so that amendment was made by member Kawamoto to allow for members of the public. To attend if they cannot attend in person. But I am now recognizing neighborhood assistant Logan to provide clarity.
Yeah, just, just for a point of context, so I know that, um. You guys are used to all be in-person, but just as a point of clarity, like, in my other boards, we have elected officials that aren't me. They, they physically cannot make the, uh, the meetings in person, whether it's they're on the mainland, or they're at the Capitol. Certain senators and representatives, or even members from their office, just, they, they get, they're not gonna be able to. Fit a meeting, but that's why the online portion is great, so that way they can. Deliver those, uh, those reports to you guys on a monthly basis. Thank you, Chair.
Logan. We never had that problem before, okay? You didn't say for twenty years. And I was thinking, stop the online costing money now. And most of the whoever representative. Let, let, let's send somebody representative from there for, who come to the meeting. We don't have no power on that.
Uh, so yeah, so as far as costs, the online portion, that, that is completely a hundred percent run by our office and has no extra expenditures. But the in-person element, if you guys were to move back to Palolo Elementary, that does have a, uh, cost associated with it. Yeah. Thank you, Chair.
Yep. Exactly.
And Morgan, I'm, I'm Chair, Colin, I have a question when.
Go ahead, member.
Um, who's gonna set up all the, um. The cameras and. So that we can see the people that are calling in with WebEx, will the neighborhood assistant? Do all of that?
Yeah, Logan here is nodding.
Okay, and then, um, will Olelo be able to still? Tape us with having both? Venues?
Yeah, Logan will answer your question.
Yeah, so, uh, the neighborhood assistant, me, I would still come in person, and I would set up your guys' meetings, and depending on how busy you guys get at Palolo Elementary School. If it were passed hypothetically, then Olelo could in, could send a videographer, and that way you guys could have the, uh, the added, uh. Because right now, we just have the Olelo online, just, uh, reporting the WebEx element, but if, depending on, you know, their availability and how. How much attendance there was at Palolo Elementary, then they may end up sending someone to film in person.
Okay. Um, let's just vote for the meeting, date and time, location. Online. We can talk on that, when, when we in person in the, in. The August meeting.
Thank you, member Shirocky, it has already been amended.
Whether we let online component or not. We're gonna be here and everything, so.
I think in, in, in the, in the, um. In the interest in conducting business, uh. Where are we at? We're, we're at a subsidiary motion to include an online component. And it's, right now, it's silent about who's gotta be present or not, so. And, uh. So let's, let's try to conduct business.
Thank you, member Hack, so I'm gonna take comments from Senator Ihara, and then we're going to take action on the amended motion.
Right. One, one way you can view this is to request. The physical attendance, uh. Those you want. And then if you can't, then they can't. But there will still be allowed, and but you clearly. So that I would be here unless. That's under the existing motion. Not made mandatory, either way.
Right.
Logan.
Okay.
Uh, um. Earl. Please, please show respect.
Okay, member Shirocky, last comment before we take action on the amended motion.
Let's, let's vote on meeting date and time and location. Okay, because we can help them with all the stuff, people talking after it, on the, on the online co- component, we can always talk there when we in a meeting, the next one, so we can. More like hear everybody, whatever they wanna do.
Okay, let's take action now, so the amended motion is to have our meetings on the second Wednesday. At seven PM at Palolo Elementary, a hybrid option. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Is there anyone with reservations or no? Seeing none, the motion has passed.
Hmm.
Great, okay, so the next agenda item is the determination of the recess schedule. So we are allowed up to three per year? Do we have a motion for the recess schedule?
Okay. Logan. We, we always had that for the last one is January. June and September, it's all by.
Okay, is that a motion?
June and September.
I, I second that motion, if it's a motion, I second it.
Okay. Opening its discussion from community members.
Sorry, if I could just clarify, the motion is to have recess in December and then June this December.
June, yeah, January, June, December. All three, yeah.
Thank you very much.
So the motion is to have recesses. In January, June, and December, any comments?
And September.
September, how?
September and not December, because we used to have it, have a meeting in December and have a little Christmas potluck.
Well, we get, no, we're talking about, I. This is, is Ja- January, June, and September.
Sorry, member Shirocky, that's my bad, so just to clarify the motion.
We get our potluck.
Exactly, that's what I said.
Okay. Great. So the motion is to. Recession in January, June, and September, all in favor, say aye.
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 The motion has passed. The next agenda item is. Adoption of oral testimony rules.
Let's see, we usually have a, uh, two different tracks, one is for public testimony of, uh, three minutes. And for presenters, ten minutes, is that, is that? Is that what you've heard from the other boards, uh, Logan?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Randy, um. So currently, I know that at least, uh, my. My A award, who just have the meeting last night, they passed something very similar to where. It's three minutes for. Oral testimony for reports and for members of the public, and then, yeah, ten minutes for, uh, presentations. The only thing I would recommend is if you guys include, uh.
Oh my god.
Bless you.
Yeah, sorry, the last point I just said is, uh, if you guys could. Clarify whether the time limit includes or does not include question and answer time, yeah.
Well, it's understood that, that it's not, it's flexible, uh, sometimes it, it does go over, uh, so, uh. Uh, I, I think, uh. It's up to Chair's discretion.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree, uh, a, a great way to word your motion is to basically put that right in there, to where. You have these limits, but it is at the Chair's discretion at the end of the day, if that could be included, that makes it a lot easier to run the meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Um, okay, I move that, uh, I move that the, uh, oral testimony, uh, uh, rules are three minutes for, uh. Uh, oral testimony, ten minutes for presentation. Plus questions at the, at, subject to the Chair's discretion. Is that, did I get it right? I, I, I don't.
Yes, thank you, member Hack, it was seconded. All in favor, say aye. Ayes.
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion has passed. So on to the next agenda item, designation of board committees and committee chairs. Any discussion on this?
None, none, normally nothing, not right now.
Okay, we can bring it up in a future meeting if, if needed. So the next agenda item is the approval of regular meeting minutes from Wednesday, May ten.
Okay.
Um, I, I make a motion, we approve our regular meeting. On Wednesday, May ten.
Thank you, member Shirocky. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, member Hack, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the minutes are approved. So finally, any reports by board members regarding their attendance at other meetings affecting Palolo? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda item, reports by elected officials, do we have a representative for a congressman case? Seeing none, do we have a representative?
Excuse me.
Member Shirocky?
Um. Our, um. Board business, we go make swearing of our officers, you know, who came inside. We gonna do that in August. You know, the guys that didn't go to the meeting or whatever. The swearing of board. We got, now we get that, so, you know what I mean, and, and the regular. Board members, so you can swear their name.
Yeah, thank you, member, we'll take it up next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a representative for council members, say? Hi, councilman.
Hi, councilman.
Oh, you have intermuted council member.
Okay, can you hear me now, Logan?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, congratulations to all the new board members and the old timers who have been re-elected. You have my. Report in the link at this point in time, and I'd just like to go over some of the highlights. For this particular month, on seven twenty-two, twenty-three, next week, Saturday, you're all invited to the Blue Zone Keiki to Kapuna event. It will be at Eisenberg Park from nine AM to noon. And there'll be information booths on healthcare. Health, uh. Exercises and other promotions and demonstrations. On the twenty-ninth, if any of you are free, that's. Ju- July twenty-ninth, from nine to eleven AM, we'll be having a cleanup. At the Kimiki Park. From nine till eleven at Kimiki Park. The monthly capital improvement project, it's, I think, we all know about the Waimea and. Keola Neli Place, that's the Russo Services that did the, uh, embankment of the collapsed road on Waimea Road. That is ninety-five percent done. Then we have the Kohaheal Street Waimea Road area. Emergency work stabilization, Shinabo Foundation, that was a contract of twenty-four million, and as of this time, we're ninety percent completed. And then as we move on to roadway improvements, there's also another area of twenty-four, twenty-eight Waimea Road. For road improvements. I, I do have a report. From, uh, this city in regards to the Kohaheal Waimea Road stabilization project. And it was submitted to me by Mr. Stanley Katsura. And it is in the link, if I'm not mistaken, so it highlights what we have tried to accomplish. I have a report right here, which I think I can go over it with you folks. The overview is that stabilization work includes. The tieback anchor systems and soda pile wall complete. Grading activity substantially complete. Installation of erosion control and vegetation on graded areas are ongoing. Roadway construction of Kohaheal Street. From Kohaheal Place to Hilo Place is complete. But they are working on the hecko improvements that includes removal of temporary pole in the roadway. And installing permanent pole that will be completed. However. Reopening of the roadway is affected by additional hecko work. To siding lines onto poles which will allow street lighting installation. By the Department of Design and Construction. Improvements to Kohaheal Place to address drainage of surface water is complete. Installation of slope bollards are complete also. So those are some of the projects that are still ongoing. And like I said earlier, we are about ninety percent complete at this point in time. Moving on. That, that's about it for now, and I'll be happy to answer any question that the board members and residents may have, and also the fact that. Last week, we did pass a measure that gave. The general public, property owners, some property tax relief. Bill thirty-seven and bill forty. Bill thirty-seven dealt with tax credits. For a couple of making eighty thousand or less as a joint income would qualify. For a tax credit. And bill forty was increasing the homeowner's exemption. As the primary residency for homeowners. and Bill forty was increasing the homeowner's exemption as the primary residency for homeowners. And that was about, hold on, I've got it right here. Okay, I'll get that very shortly, and, okay, yep, it's right here. It's gonna be from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and sixty for Kupunas sixty-five years and older, and for the regular homeowners exemption, from a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. So both a twenty thousand dollar increase in credits and exemption. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have at this point in time.
Thank you. I recognize the community member with their hand up on Webex.
Here, it's, uh, resident, uh, Jack James. Okay, Jack James, that's you.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair and Board Members. Uh, good evening, Councilman.
Good evening, Jack.
Um, on June seventh, the legislative budget of the City Council was passed, and you voted for that, I believe. Am I correct, sir?
Yes, I did vote for the legislative budget.
And that did include the salary of each council member, uh, and we now know it included the, the new salary amount, correct, Councilman?
That is correct, whereby the Chair will find the resources to, uh, to fund the funds, the increase of the salaries, yes.
All right, my final question will be about that. Uh, the, the salaries went into effect, uh, July first, and your salary was increased by forty-three thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so my final question is, um, where, have you been advised, wh- what city service will be reduced to cover the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in salaries that will go to the each of the nine of you?
Well, first and foremost, let me say that it is not the city services, but the legislative branch.
Okay.
The legislative branch, not the executive branch. And within the, yeah, which in the legislative branch, I believe the Chair were looking at ways to come up with the resources to fund those seven, six of us that supported the pay raise.
And is that, is that the Chair's, um, at his sole discretion?
I, I believe so, but more importantly, he's conferring with the Budget Chair and others that are part of it, because I can't get involved because of sunshine.
Yeah, it's, uh, the, but I asked the Budget Chair last night, and she hadn't been advised at all. So, uh, thus, thus far, he has not talked with her. So, Councilman, I appreciate you taking my questions, and, uh, appreciate it, sir.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions for councilmembers? Yes.
Hi, Calvin. It's, it's, it's Corey from Waimea.
Oh, yeah, hi, Corey Cott, yes.
Hey, I had a question. Thank you so much for, um, um, being at tonight's meeting, and I hope we do have, like, in-person meetings at the elementary school again. Sounds like they voted on it tonight, so that's wonderful.
Great.
So I had a question about the Kuahia, um, Waimea landslide.
Yes.
So previously, oh, gosh, excuse me, I'm a little nervous here, but, um, so in the fall of twenty-twenty, in November, um, right before you were elected, uh, previous councilwoman, Ann Kobayashi, she passed out two resolutions.
Yes.
The first resolution was introduced by, uh, Councilman Kaika Anderson, and that was Resolution two zero one four five, and that was for, um, an eminent domain, which actually, that was one of the houses that was next to us, uh, Peter Fong's house, and they, they needed it, so it was like a forced acquisition. So seven houses that were next to me were bought and by the city, and they needed that land. Unfortunately, Peter's the eminent domain, so they, they created a resolution for him, passed it, it passed nine zero. Um, in addition to that, the Resolution two zero two-six-one was a, another resolution that was passed for Kuahia Waimea, and it also passed nine zero. The full council voted on it, it passed nine zero. And that was, that was so that the city would work with the impacted homeowners that were affected by the landslide in Kuahia, and there's quite a few people, like, right directly behind my house, there's four houses that have been abandoned, and one across the street from me, James Conant's house on Waimea, that there's been no resolution for over, like, we're going on almost three years, but specifically, that resolution was passed to help those people. It's, it was stated in the resolution that the city was supposed to work with any impacted or interested pro- property owners in good faith, and that mediation or emergency repairs or acquisition was supposed to, um, ensue. And they did, they did do that, like, by force. They forced Peter, Peter Fong's house, you know, into a resolution for eminent domain that passed, and the city took his property. But yet, all these other ling- languishing properties that are surrounding the slide area have not been addressed, and I, I just, I see, I don't, haven't seen any action, and I, I just really want your input, and I want to see us get to some point where we help these people that deserve help in our neighborhood.
Okay, Corey, and for the board members who have been with the board for a long time, and the new board members, if you recall when we had Ross Sasamura representing the past administration at our board meetings, right now, three of the families are in litigation. Most of the families have filed for litigation with the City and County of Honolulu. And for, for what Corey said, it is correct. One of them is Mr., uh, James Conant, and there is another family that is going through the litigation process with Corporation Council. Other than that, I can't say what is being negotiated, but I can also say to you folks that, Corey, I did try, when I had, when Keah was living up there too, Osuka, that we tried to get mediation done as a class, a class, a class of all private landowners, and the landowners decided not to go as a class, but as individuals. So today, that is where it's at. I have Mr. Scott Ishikawa, who is the PR person that can maybe fill in, fill you folks in also, but I've tried to be on top of it, and now that it is going through litigation, I've been just wa- mon- monitoring what we have been doing with the project that I shared with you folks early. Scott, would you like to say a few words? Unmute yourself, there you go.
I can find on mute button in my, thank you. Everybody, um, evening to all the new members and the current members of the board. Uh, just basically, I'm gonna reiterate what councilmember said about the project. I think the, the biggest question we had was about Kuahia Street again. Um, question, I, I think councilmember Say had already mentioned that Hiko had already moved that temporary pole that was in the middle of the road. Uh, right now, they're, uh, adding electrical wires, and then with that, we, the city's gonna be adding the street lighting. Um, with that, we're, we're looking at reopening the Kuahia Street, uh, in late August at this point. Uh, if you've been driving through the area, you probably see the landscaping that's been going on. Uh, they have been putting, uh, hydromulch or hydroseed mats on the loose soil, so it doesn't create any erosion, and at the same time, the grass grows, so the grass will be, um, they're doing some kind of low, low maintenance grass right now, and right now, it's, uh, looking at, work is gonna go up probably to the end of the year, yeah, for that, yeah. Uh, I think we mentioned at the last meeting again about irrigation, there will be no irrigation on the site itself. Uh, and the reason is, we have those metal anchors below, uh, the security area, and obviously, we don't want water infiltrating the area, and, uh, you know, uh, corroding, corroding the metal anchors, yeah. But basically, I think Councilman, or Councilmember Say had kind of pretty much, uh, given most of the details on what's been going on, yeah.
I guess I'm questioning for Scott.
Yes, sir.
Scott, do you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, Scott, first evening, um, you got some pipes running down, down the, um, on the hillside, what's the water pipe?
Which, which side is that?
Oh, both sides, when it comes straight down towards, uh, Waimea Road, what I mean, the, the pipe, that surface pipe, what's that, water pipe?
I'll have to check on that. I'm, I don't think we have irrigation, but we do have a pipe that goes into the drainage, yeah.
No, what the, the, you can see the pipes all coming, coming down.
Are you talking of the pipes on the, on the construction site itself, or on the?
Yeah.
So that's basically the drainage system, and then the water infiltrates into, um, the storm system, yeah.
Because I was telling you guys that people gonna slide out, they gonna say so. You guys got the fence now. I can see it, all the fence is made, where people cannot come inside the area, right? Okay, now you get pipes coming down, all, you know, down, down the hillside, you know, in, in the space.
So we do have a drainage system as part of that construction.
Yeah.
As we, we do have a drainage system as part of the construction site because of all the heavy rains, uh, and then the water is siphoning into the storm system, uh, along the roadside, yeah. And that's to prevent erosion, and obviously, we don't want water getting into the, into the ground, infiltrating it at, uh, apparently, that's where we have all the metal anchors trying to hold everything in place, yeah.
And Scott, you know that, uh, Kuahia Place, I went up there the other day, and, um, you guys got some iron plates that go up Kuahia Place. Is that for, is that for the Kuahia Place residents?
Can you say that again?
Kuahia Place, I went up there about a week ago, and now they got some iron plates and going up toward Kuahia Place.
That was to allow.
Temporary for the Kuahia Place residents?
That was to allow Hiko to get up there to, uh, add the power lines and everything.
That's temporary for the Hiko guys. So you get now do nothing for the Kuahia Place and put up on temporary road for them, right? So that's not gonna be taken away then.
I have to check on what, what's the future on the temporary road, yeah. I'll have to check what's on the future of the temporary road with the city, yeah.
So you guys said that temporary with the iron plates and, you know, going up, and I seen the stop, so, so that's what for how, that's just for they can go up the road, right? Temporarily. So what you guys gonna do? Get them, give them guys, um, temporary road? It don't, don't have to be that, you know what I mean? They haven't been able to go up there. You get seven families up there, you know what I mean? You're never gonna do nothing then.
I'll, I'll have to get back to you what design and construction is planning to do, yeah.
Can I say something on that topic?
Because, you know what I mean, um, you know, I, I told you from way before that, you know, you just got the equipment up there, so, you know, this makes something so they can go up, you know? That's the only reason, you know what I mean? That's what you, kind hard it so the people, you know, people go up and down, you know, that's all.
I agree with you, Earl. Earl, I agree with you, and I think it's been like, it's been over four years now since, uh, those people, like, there's one lady, uh, Shirley, she, she has climbing gloves. She has to get on her hands and knees, and she has to climb up that steep embankment. And I know the city's part owner of that road, and I know that they're trying to come to some kind of an agreement, but we're talking years now. It's been years where
I told him.
Nothing happening. Calvin?
Oh, no, Corey, I, I would say I disagree, because I truly believe that we are trying to do our very best. There is a question now about how do you come up with a jurisdictional ownership of Kuahia Place? It was always a private road. Kuahia Place.
Right, right, we know that.
Okay, un- until you dedicate it to the city, it has to be up to city standards. And it is not up to city standards, but we are getting involved now, because we bought the home in front of the, of the road going up to the homes. And one of the families had contacted us yesterday to ask for a status report, and the staff and I did submit a report to the Department of Design and Construction and to the Mayor's Office because of what the person that, uh, I, if, if he doesn't mind, it was Professor Chesbar, who lives at the back end of Kuahia Place. So we are on top of it, it's just a question of all of this administrative, you know, paperwork that we have to do, and I believe Mr. Ishitawa is trying to do his best, and that's why we're saying to you folks this evening, we do have a report from Mr. Katsura, but the next question will be, now that the electrical poles have been addressed, now we'd have to deal with the ownership of the road, the jurisdiction of how many of the families own a portion of the road, and how much does the city would have to pay for their portion of the road for the improvements?
Calvin?
Yes, Earl.
Our owners over there, they just said they're gonna pay for the new road. I don't think so, they're, I don't think they got money, okay? So that road got all beating up when we, on Kuahia Road, that's when the, the, the road going up got all beating up worse, you know what I mean? It was hard to operate it. So I was thinking, the city with a kind heart, build a temporary, temporary road for the Kuahia Place residents, that's what I'm asking for. Cannot care whatever.
I, I, I agree with you, and I recall at the neighborhood board meetings of the past, where they had a wooden bridge, right? And Mrs. Noji, who was about to give birth, you know, I go back and I, I really sympathize with the families. I go and visit the site, and now the question would be, let's continue on working together, but patiently, and see how much more can be done. But I can, I can say to you, there are three pending litigation lawsuits against the city right now, and Corporation Council is trying to address those three. I'm sorry, you know, we can't work in a much more efficient and faster way, but this is taxpayers' money also.
Thank you, councilmembers, for the report. So because this seems to be a topic of interest, you know, to facilitate a more productive discussion, I'm gonna end it here and ask that we provide a presentation that addresses the community's concern in the next board meeting.
Okay, we, we can also make the request to, uh, uh, to the Mayor's, uh, representative.
Yes, yeah, it, it is not the, the single responsibility of your office, thank you, councilmember, will include the appropriate, um, City Council, head mayor, and other executive branch agencies.
Thank you.
Hey, Calvin, real quick, um,
Yeah, Derek.
Let's remember, say, um, hey, hey, how are you? Um, I, I remember, yeah, we did have a meeting about a year ago, um, with a representative from the Mayor's Office, and I appreciate your update today, and I guess just wanna say publicly that it does look like, from our meeting to present, we have been making, uh, there has been some progress on that issue with them buying out the road and, and kind of putting those structures in place with the, um, power line or telephone row. So, so we, we have been making progress. Um, I, I just, the, the follow-up question is, who is, I, I know that representative is no longer at the Mayor's Office now. Um, who is the representative who would handle this, this issue now as someone for the residents to be able to check in with?
Okay, that would probably be, uh, Lauren, I don't know if I, I can use your name, but you represent the mayor at the Palolo Board meetings. But if there is a point person, it'll probably have to be at the Managing Director's Office.
Okay, got it, got it. Thank you, thank you, council.
You're very welcome. I'm just happy that the more I can educate the, the general population and the members of the board, you know, I'm happy, because that's the process I have to deal with. My hands are tied sometimes, too. It's not as easy as what you folks may think it is, because I still recall three years ago, and I think for you who were on the board three years ago, you folks recall what Mr. Anishi said? When are you gonna put up my po- my sign pole that was hit by an automobile on Palolo Avenue? And I don't know if it's been done, because of the work orders that they have, but that's the kind of stuff I deal with day in and day out, but thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers, so we'll look forward to the presentation, um, next month.
Okay, thank you very much, Colin.
Thank you. With that, I'll transition into the report by Mayor Bledgier, Representative, Acting Director Mamizuka.
Yeah, uh, Aloha, good evening, uh, Board Chair and, uh, Board Members, uh, nice to be here, uh, in person. I've been waiting for this moment, can't wait till next month. Uh, so I'm actually, uh, not acting director no more. I go back as a de- deputy director. Uh, this, this morning, we just had our first confirmation hearing for our new director and chief engineer, uh, Mr. Gene Albono. Uh, we're very, very excited to have him on board as the leader of the Department of Facility Maintenance. Uh, at this time, I would like to, uh, present the mayor's report. Uh, you know, out of the Mayor's Office, I just wanted to, uh, you know, talk about the Mayor's, uh, monthly highlights, uh, you know, this is something that the mayor really, uh, appreciates. It's all the hard work, uh, that, that the city, city employees are working on, you know, projects, and, you know, one of them is, uh, you know, the, the start of the rail, uh, June thirtieth, we had our, uh, uh, open, uh, grand opening ceremony, uh, and it's actually operating, you know, uh, although passenger, you know, it kind of went down, uh, but we are positive, uh, looking forward to the future as rail moves forwards, uh, the airport and to Middle Street. Uh, another highlight in the Mayor's, uh, newsletter for July. Uh, another highlight in the mayor's newsletter for July, uh, tax relief for homeowners. Uh, in the FY twenty-four budget year, which is from July first to uh July first, twenty twenty-three. And ends in June, uh, June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Uh, another highlight is uh. Two central Oahu swimming pool reopened after repairs, uh, I believe that was in uh. Waipahu and Pro City District Parks. And then, an update on the Evale Resource Center. The Evale Resource Center is set to accommodate as many as nineteen patients at a time, with a goal to provide permanent housing for patients within one month. Uh, so that is moving forward. That's, that's great for the city and for our, uh, people in Nia, uh. And last, uh, part of the highlights, the twenty-five million dollars, uh, there's twenty-five, twenty-five million dollars more for rental and utility uh relief program. So, uh. The city's record utility relief program is temporarily reopened this summer. Thanks to twenty-five million dollars in state and local fiscal recovery funds from the Honolulu City Council. Uh, Logan, if you could please, uh, you know. Touch the uh, the, the link, yeah?
Yeah, I'll make sure that uh it's in the Google Drive and it's provided.
And also from the mayor's office, uh, it was the one Oahu with Mayor Rick Blandiardi, Blandiardi podcast, which is hosted by Randy Siza. And every week, uh, you know, people can, uh, podcast, I guess you can. Call in or, you know, I, I, I don't know how to do podcasts, sorry. But uh, you know, uh, you can ask the mayor and one of the C, uh, city leaderships, it, it will be like a director or deputy director. And I believe next, next week, it'll be Gina Bono, the new DFM, uh, director and chief engineer on the podcast. Yeah, so lucky for him, the second week he had to, you know, open up to the public, right? And then, uh, moving on, uh, uh, from May, uh, last uh. Labor Board meeting in May, some of the issues that were brought up, uh, the first one was for DTS, the speed tables. A member would like a breakdown of the process to get a speed table or speed bumps installed. They would also like to know how to differentiate between a project. Being city or state jurisdiction. And the response is uh by DTS, the city evaluates various locations along city and county roadways to be per, to determine if speed. Table race crosswalk or speed bumps, pumps are appropriate based on the roadway geometrics, traffic speeds and volumes. Number of travel lanes and surrounding development, and will be given due consideration during the evaluation process. If the roadway meets the criteria for a speed table race crosswalk or speed bumps, humps. The city will prioritize the locations and either program for their installation or request assistance. From the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation, HDOT. To implement the race crosswalks, however, please note that this process will take some time as to ensure that the city's decisions are based on sound engineering principles. Uh, the second item was for DFM, uh. Pretending to road striping, a member commented, commented that the striping and yellow lines along Tenth Avenue are fading and need to be repainted. Uh, and our response, uh, it approved our, 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 uh, how many who go through is aware of the uh fading striping. And it will be getting, it's on, uh, in the planning stages and will be scheduled uh to be restripped, uh. Now, as you all know, currently, we kind of backed up, uh, as far as signs, uh, street sign installation and also uh road uh pavement marking, so, uh. I'll, I'll try and contact the roads division chief and see if we can kind of push this up a little sooner, uh. And that's all, uh, any questions?
Uh, Logan, I have a question, who, who is speaking right now?
Warren Mamizuka.
Oh, gee.
Hi, Earl.
You gotta accept that Logan Hattison, you know what I mean?
Huh?
You don't have on top like you said, you got, you got Logan Ha- Hattison on top, NCO.
We're all in the same room.
Yeah, yeah, we're all. We get a call, so, okay, so, so now the guy who talking inside there, is a kind of big guy, that's you, Warren, we're not meet you yet.
Yes, it is, I was, I was expecting to meet you, bro. I was hoping to meet you tonight.
No, uh, we're gonna, I'm, well, we gonna know next time, we'll, we gonna be in person, so no problem. Okay, so you are in Mamizuka?
Mamizuka, yes.
Yeah, because I've, I've been telling you about the uh, Pal, uh, Palolo and Waiala, nobody can see me yet and all that stuff. But what floor are you on? I might see you in person.
Uh, I'm actually, uh, I'm actually located at Kaukulehali.
Which one, where?
Kaukulehali.
That's, well, what I look, that's not the kind, that's not Frank Fossey building, huh?
No, 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 uh, I live Kaukulehali.
Okay. Anyway, you know, nothing been done when, you know, the staff they'll talk to you, eh? That's why they stop here, they view this to have some bug, I, I don't know who's talking or what, you know what I mean?
Thank you, members of Rocky, yeah, thank you, any other questions?
Okay, next month we can, I might come talk to you in, in person or like you said.
Thank you, members of Rocky, any other questions for Deputy Director Mamizuka on his report? Thank you, seeing none, we will move on to Governor Green's Representative Ryan Aguilar. It's Ryan.
Hello. Hi, good evening, board, uh, thank you, chair, um, yeah, so I just included in the chat, uh, the governor's June. Newsletter, uh, and that has uh different topics from like Medicare fraud prevention. Uh, hurricane preparations and um the first medical respite, uh, Kauhali downtown. Um, and as of today, uh, June twelfth, uh, the governor's hosted eighteen different uh bill signings. Um, for different things from good governance to affordable housing. Um, protections for victims of domestic violence, traffic safety, cost of living, uh, and other uh items. Um, I'm here just to, you know, answer, or not answer, but take any questions back to the governor's um, uh, communications team. Uh, so I'm happy to, uh, to, to do that and bring back answers uh for the next time, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, any questions from board members or community members? Okay, seeing none, uh, let's move on to Representative Sayama.
Good evening, uh, members of the Polo Neighborhood Board, I just want to congratulate, uh, all the new members, returning members, and of course, uh, chair. Uh, I look forward to working with you, uh, during your tenure. Um, it's been a while since I actually seen you guys, so, uh, first, um, we did have a community cleanup. In Ozama Park, but, uh, on Waimea Road, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but if you're going into Waimea. Uh, it's gonna be on the right side, it's not like an official park, but um it's kind of a little undergrowth where people like to walk their dogs and take walks, so. Uh, since uh Mrs. Ozama passed away, uh, the park has been kind of getting overgrown. So, uh, myself, council member, uh, Se, uh, members of the Honolulu Chinese JACs and the Democratic Party District Council. Uh, worked together to clean some of the dead branches, the overgrowth. And so we were able to collect twenty-seven bags of uh green waste. And thanks to the Department of Facility Maintenance for collecting all that trash. Uh, but we will be, uh, doing another one, uh, in August on the twelfth, Saturday morning, nine to twelve, uh, just like last time. Um, and if anyone would like to come, please, uh, join, just bring gloves, and if you have any kind of tools, uh, shears, um, maybe like a saw for some of the larger, uh. Branches, that would be helpful, um, if you have any questions, just let me know, or you can reach my office at eight oh eight five eight six six nine zero zero, or my email, rep sayama at cap. Capital dot Hawaii dot gov. Um, next, I just wanna give, uh, you guys a heads up, this is not specifically related to Palolo, but um it's. Tangentially related to monster homes, uh, so on Friday, July fourteenth, uh, there will be a hearing. On the thirty-six fifteen Sierra Drive, uh, monster home, uh, that's, uh, being developed by Miss Christie Z. Lay. Um, some of you might recognize her name, she's been developing, uh, similar monster home developments all over the island, including Palolo. Uh, but in this particular case, the city did issue a stop work order for the development on Sierra Drive, which they're, uh, appealing to decision. And so there will be a public hearing for that on Friday again on the fourteenth, this will be at eleven AM. At the Frank Fossey Municipal Building, uh, conference room, uh, so. Just to give you a heads up, there will not be any public testimony, um, it, the appeal, building appeals board will just be hearing. Uh, from, uh, Miss Lay and her attorney, as well as, uh, from the, uh, council, city council, not city council, um. I forget what the, the guys who are defending or representing the cities are, but I think that might be an interesting, yeah, yeah, council corporation, thank, thank you, councilman. Um, yeah, so, uh, if you're interested in that, uh, feel free to come by, um, I'll try to be there myself. Uh, but it might go on for a few hours, so if you just wanna stay for the beginning, you don't have to stay throughout the whole thing. Um, that's about it for now, uh, oh, and finally, on the legislature side. Um, not too sure if it comes as a surprise, but we will not be going into a special session. Um, to override any of the governor's vetoes, so, uh, we are looking forward to another productive legislative session next year, starting January and. Doing our homework in the meantime over the interim, uh, so my focus will be, uh, to work with the school facilities authority. Um, to begin the RFP process for the development of teacher housing or housing at the Queen Lilio Colonial Elementary School property. I was able to secure about nine hundred thousand dollars in CIP funds for the initial assessment, environmental impact statements and design and planning for that. So that's something I'm excited about, um, I'm also very focused on working on human resources, uh. Again, I think I've mentioned this to the board before, but just takes an insanely long time to hire anyone in the state, about six to nine months, and. No one's gonna wait that long to hear back from a job application, so. I'm just trying to figure out what, uh, red tape we could cut through there, uh, streamline the process and make us more competitive as an employer. Uh, so that's something that I hope to do, and, uh, if there's any issues that come up, uh, in Palolo, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'd. Love to work with you, uh, on legislation, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Representative Sayama, any questions or concerns from board members or members of the community? Members of Rocky, go ahead.
Well, Earl, you're, uh, you're muted, Earl.
Earl, you're recognized, you can start.
Earl, you're, you're muted. Get out, unmute.
Earl, do you have a question? Hey, go now.
You can hear me?
Yeah, now we could hear you.
I don't know what happened to the computers, we get in trouble here, so we got a talking person, eh? Anyway, Jackson, you're doing a good job, okay?
Thank you, thank you, Earl.
Question again, now we have monster house. As you go up to, up Sierra Drive.
Yeah.
You go probably about maybe quarter mile on your left side, on the hillside, there's a big house there. You would just go and go in, okay? You gotta check that house, I don't know, you know, how, how they keep on letting it out, just grow and grow, big and bigger, then. I started to look for that other house you're talking about, um, thirty-six fourteen, I was going up there, you know, you see it, uh, monster house. It's on, when you go up, it's on the right-hand side.
That's the one, yeah.
Eh? Okay, trying to look at that stuff there, and it's a hard trick for looking, but the road is narrow, eh?
Yeah, 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 no, no getting any place to park, so it's a little tricky.
So I can understand, how come they allow that, okay? Now, there's another one on Paula Drive. You know that one, yeah? I just read it, on Paula Drive, when you're going up there, you make that left turn and the house is on the. Forget anymore the street, but it's on your, if you go up Paula Drive, it's on the, it's on the right-hand side. It's, it's, it's a place inside here. The, the people just said that, but I can't understand why, how they, they, they're letting you guys go. Inspector would have took him, you know, early, way before that, you know? The, the way I look at it, the building is so big, and then they asking for, for, oh, gee. Can you give me a break or something, you know, I thought, the houses are so big, you know what I mean, unless, you know? I don't understand how, how they got away with that.
Yeah, you know, I think that's the thing that they're trying to address with the thirty-six fifteen case, um. The argument is that the plans that they submitted to DPP were proper, uh, with the zoning for that area. The R five zoning, but when they actually built it, they deviated from that plan that they submitted. Do it, make it larger than it was initially intended, and so. Uh, I think that's the sticking point, and, and for, at least for my observations for these kind of developments. Uh, they, they try to build very quickly, so by the time someone sends an inspector out to check on whether development is. Legal or not, you know, it's already been built, and so all you could do is really issue the fine, which is really money compared to what money they'll be making. Uh, from the property itself, so, um, we hope that, or we're very optimistic that this, uh, case. Will set precedent for other monster home developments in our neighborhoods. Um, I think ideally, uh, with the thirty-six fifteen property, uh, they would have to demolish it. Uh, because they've already put in the concrete and it's way too close to the setback, so I don't see any way they, they could, you know. Build from where they are now, they would have to start back from square one.
You know, Jackson, you know, you, you get the building inspected, it goes up there, you know, you know, round, round breaking. And okay, when the first wall goes up, they, they gotta go up there, Jack, so something is going on, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and you know, I, I think we all would like that, but, you know, I think Calvin would agree that, you know, there, there's just so much understaffing. Um, in the Department of Planning and Permitting and the city and the state as a whole, so that's why we, that's why we need the community to, you know, work with us. To be the eyes and ears of the, uh, of our neighborhoods and to report any, um, misconduct that you guys see. So, you know, we really do, uh, need your help, so, yeah, I appreciate that, Earl.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you, members of Rocky, for your question, I'm recognizing member Kalahoro.
Aloha, representative.
Aloha.
Uh, I just had a question, when we find these people at fault. Is there a fine in addition to asking them to demolish or any kind of record that you can apply that, that kind of follows that? Because sometimes some of those groups are just, um, developers putting up houses for others. So is there some way that you differentiate between like a, a regular homeowner and someone that's doing this for resale?
Logan, who's speaking now? I, I, I don't know who's talking.
That's Juanita, I think, right?
Hi, Earl.
Who, who's, who's talking?
Earl, it's Juanita. So Representative Sayama, you can answer the question.
Okay, so, uh, Juanita, so that's a good question, um, you would really would have to take a look at the permit that they have posted, uh, in front of the development, so. And you, you probably would have to have some kind of knowledge about who's been the, like, monster home developers. So like Christie Lay, like, she's well-known for this kind of stuff, so, uh, she's not very hard to spot. Um, but I, I think it's always safe to say, hey, like, if you see, um, development in your neighborhood. Uh, there's one like a few blocks from my house, and you don't, you know, you, you're, you don't see like, I don't know, like a local family or, you know, local workers, then that's kind of a. And you don't, you know, you, you're, you don't see like, I don't know, like a local family or, you know, local workers, then that's kind of a, a red flag. Uh, so, you know, you could call to, um, my office or Councilmember Sei's office or. Just directly to Department Planning and Permitting, say, hey, like, I noticed there's this, you know, construction going on. Uh, I didn't see like, they posted a permit sign or they didn't have the dust covers. Can you go check it out when you have the time, you know, uh, that's something that's, you know, you, you're free to do, and I would encourage you to do it. Um, and if you don't want to do it yourself, of course, like I said before, you could contact my office or Calvin's office, and we'll do that for you.
But are there any fines?
Are there any fines? Uh, I'm, I think there are. Uh, I'm not familiar with city ordinances to know how much the fine is. Um, may, Uncle Calvin, do you know, uh, any fines from DPP for these kind of developments?
Hold on.
Okay. Sorry, Juanita, I could take a look into that and get back to you.
Okay, am I on, no?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're good.
Yeah, Juanita, there is that provision whereby once a notice of violation is sent. A bigger pardon?
Go ahead.
Once the vi- notice of violation is given to that particular homeowner or developer or contractor. They have to correct the mistakes that they have made. Every day that they don't do it until the inspector goes back, I think they'll be cited with a violation. We have discussions in regards to starting off with fifty dollars a day. Sometimes members wanted to go up to a hundred, but it all depends on the issues that, uh, most of these applicants have. A lot of times today, you, you wouldn't believe this, a lot of homeowners. Have a hard time understanding the building permitting process, and that's where I think they. Do cite that it's not their fault, it's just that sometimes they don't know that under their property, there may be an easement. An easement is a water line, a sewer line, or stormwater line that is tied to your property. That we call in the county a lateral, because a lateral, then it's connected to the main line of your water system. Your sewer system and your stormwater system. So those are issues that, uh, you know, I, I have to deal with day in and day out, but, uh, just give us a call. You folks are the best as far as being the police of the community in regards to monster homes. There was one issue that Jackson and I had to face was up St. Louis Heights. Saw a place, a person demolished the property home without any building permit, and the inspectors were out there. And sure enough, there wasn't any permit. And at that point, you know, it becomes a red flag as far as how the department is going to check on these type of properties. So it's, we're trying our best because there's also so much applications coming in for all type of building permits. But, uh, I can get you the information, uh, you know who was a good person that gave us a presentation last month? Was Mr. Jiro Sumada, who was the Deputy Director. That you folks do have his link in regards to the contact that you need to find out more about those type of issues.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, Representative.
You're very welcome, Juanita.
Well, that's Juanita talking.
Thank you. Any other questions for Representative Sayama?
Nothing. No question for him, he's doing a good job.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. So Senator Ibarra left a note, you may have seen him earlier on camera, but unfortunately he had to leave. If you have any questions, you can email or call his office, and if you need that contact information, you can get it from Logan. Okay, so before we go on to the residents and community concerns, I just want to remind. Um, especially the elected officials of the three, three-minute time limit that we just voted on for oral testimony. And I look forward to working with our Sergeant in Arms, Member Shiroki, to enforce that. Three minutes for their presentations. So, um, thank you, Ryan Aguilar, for keeping your presentation under three minutes. So, moving on to resident community concerns, do we have any concerns that are wished to be brought up by residents and community members?
Yeah, no concern.
Online, we have President Jack James and President Robert Armstrong.
Okay, Jack James, I'm recognizing you now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Um, I'm the founder and president of Honolulu Seven Recall. Uh, we are a group of people that, um, are not pleased with the recent salary increases. Uh, we have a lot of support in Palolo, uh, throughout the entire island, uh, seven of, of the districts. And, uh, we formed a, uh, political action committee. And we commenced Jan-, July first, and we're already collecting names of people who will sign petitions. Our goal is to remove seven of the nine council members.
What happened to him?
Sorry, James, are you still there? You, uh, you cut out on us.
Can't hear him.
Yeah, I got disconnected from the meeting. Not online anymore.
Okay. So we're going to move on, but Councilmember Sei, I know that you were going to look into which legislative funds were redirected for the salaries, so that might address some of his concerns. But I will recognize now. It's, you know, Robert Armstrong, Robert Armstrong.
Thank you, Chair. Um, my name is Robert Armstrong. I'm from the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board. And I'm here just to tell you about a island-wide meeting that everyone in your neighborhood, on your board and on this island is invited to. To organize, revitalize and, uh, reinvigorate the Neighborhood Board system. This is the system, of course, that we all are participating in and that we all love. It hasn't been looked at, uh, the neighborhood plan, that is, in the last fifteen or so years. We think it's time that we kind of sharpen that saw and get, um, the forces going so that we can take a look at the various. Issues, factors and, um, uh, situations that are now currently part of the Neighborhood Board system. So, the first organizational meeting for all of this, and I recognize that it's a very long process. It will start on Saturday, nineteenth of August, at one o'clock. That's, uh, Saturday, nineteenth of August, one PM, at eleven fifty-two Smith Street in Chinatown, eleven fifty-two Smith Street. That's the old Channel Fourteen Television Studios, and it's now the New Life Center. There's. City parking in a garage right behind the building off of Baritania. You know, so it's very easy to get to and very easy to come in and out of. And again, that meeting is the nineteenth of August at one o'clock, eleven fifty-two Smith Street. I look forward to seeing all of you there, and I thank you for the opportunity to talk to, uh, the community about this. Mahalo.
Thank you.
If you're supposed to face, but we couldn't do that in the announcements in the next quarter.
It's your agenda, Chair, whatever you want to put on it. I, I'll help you out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we have any other concerns from residents or community members? Okay, awesome. We will move on to announcements, and like the previous chair process, I will not read them. But Logan did have something to comment for Item C, Archives.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to let you guys know that, uh, the Neighborhood Commission Office is incorporating a. Drive for you guys, so we're going to be collecting all the elected officials' reports. Any news releases from the city, any materials that you might find online or that might even get handed out at the meetings, they're going to be. Online, readily available for you guys. If you guys just follow this link, it's also on, um. On, uh, the agenda, it'll be on the agenda every month, and it'll also be on the new minutes when they come out, just so that way you guys have a centralized resource for all of your, uh, board materials. Okay. Thank you, meeting here.
Question. What, what are you talking about? Our next meeting is August. On a Wednesday in Palolo Elementary School now, lo, lo, so they all, they all know what it is, now we voted for that already now.
I, Earl, yeah, so I made this agenda over a week ago. You guys just voted on the day, the date change. So while you guys pass the motion, we still have to go through the NCO and see if we can get it lined up for you guys, but. We're all confident that you guys can get it back at Palolo.
You're making things harder, you know what I mean, on this stuff here? Okay, we want to get, only so little, so hard in WebEx, you know what I mean, for talk? And so what you saying right now, we going back on WebEx in August?
No, Member Shiroki, so the agenda in front of you doesn't reflect the board action we took today. So the agenda was. Crafted before we voted to move it to Palolo Elementary. So to reiterate, our next meeting will be August ninth at Palolo Elementary.
Okay, okay, at Palolo Elementary, eh? Okay. You're gonna let all the representatives know, after you go, I wanted to do this board meeting on number one first, you know what I mean, so. So, so they know that we, we changed the date to, you know, August, Palolo Elementary School. But you can remind, you can remind, um. The, some of the, uh. The fire department and, okay, the police, that's all.
Earl, we will. So we're good for now, meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay.